And welcome, everybody. Today is Thursday, May sixteenth. I'd like to welcome you all to the Mount Carmel Area School District School Board Meeting. We'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would please stand and remain standing for a moment. It's silence afterwards. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our nation under our eye. Indivisible, indivisible, and just. A moment of silence. Thank you. Can we have a roll call for attendance, please?
Mr. Balliot.
Here.
Mr. Beresowski.
Here.
Mr. Becker.
Present.
Mr. Gonzalo.
Here.
Mr. Hexon.
Here.
Mrs. James is present. Mr. Muldowney.
Here.
Mr. Reddow.
Here. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Mr. Zach.
Here, virtual.
Okay, all present.
Okay, Mr. Cheddar, do we have any announcements?
Yep, Mr. Valley, just some quick announcements. First of all, I'd like to start off by thanking Jean Gasbready in her congratulating her on her retirement sixteen years with our district as kitchen manager. Jean has been awesome and we obviously are gonna dearly miss her and we're excited for her leading into retirement. It's crazy to think already, but our last day of school here is in a couple of weeks, May thirty first. This will be an early dismissal in both buildings at ten thirty AM in the high school and the elementary eleven forty-five for walkers and eleven fifty for bus transportation. Graduation planning. So again, this is the culminating activity here as our senior level and high school events are concluding our year. As the last few years, we've been very lucky and everyone can knock on wood wherever you're at that we're not gonna have any weather this year. But we are planning to have our event at the Silver Bowl on Friday, May thirty first, or excuse me, on Sunday, June second. But I will announce by Friday night, the night of the prom, if there is threat of inclement weather, I'm gonna pull the plug by Friday night in the prom and have to move our graduation indoors. So our seniors are gonna have to practice both indoor and outdoor prom. But again, last three years, we didn't have to worry about that. So again, knock on wood, hopefully, we don't have to worry about that. Just an FYI, that summer lunch program is going to start June tenth through July eighteenth as usual. It's gonna be in our elementary cafeteria, free lunch to school age children, and alert now with specifics will be coming out from myself and our principals shortly. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank SEI Township Superintendent Tom McGinley and the Lifeline Organization for your thirty-eight hundred dollar donation to our twenty twenty-four CAFES camp, which we are planning our eighth CAFES camp. The Lifeline Organization and SI School Township is a major contributor yearly to our camp. So again, I thank them for our, all their support of our camp. Tonight, let's talk about some agenda specifics on our May agenda. So we are bringing on a company called Site Logic to serve as our, our project manager to oversee our capital projects. These capital projects were discussed in much detail last month. So if anyone wants to check that out, check out our YouTube of last month's board meeting. The first project that's going to occur is the home bleacher side of the Silver Bowl Stadium. This will affect public use of the stadium. So more information on, on this coming soon. We are going to be using our capital reserve fund until our bond issue, which we discussed last month as well, is finalized. The next project will be our gym floor resurfacing bid, which is on tonight's agenda. We're looking to complete that project for under the forty-nine thousand dollar threshold. And we're hoping the junior high, senior high auditorium is gonna be scheduled later this summer or early in the fall. Also on tonight's agenda, I'm happy to announce that through generous donations of HPCI Construction, NRG Controls, UNB Bank, and Northeast Hearing Solutions, we have raised nearly one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars towards a total cost of one hundred and forty-nine, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars for a video board at MCA. Very excited to announce that tonight. Our district is also using our capital reserve fund to pay for the board and then we'll be reimbursed. We have a payment plan for all our donors leading over the next five years. There are still advertising opportunities available. So if anyone is of interest, certainly give me a call. And again, this is going to be, I, I think everyone agrees the Silver Bowl is one of the more historic high school stadiums in the state, if not the country. And I think a video board down there is going to add that extra special touch. It's gonna be really special and we're looking forward to that as well. So at this time, let me pass it off to Ms. Lesko. It's also gonna talk about our budget information that we're going to pass hopefully tonight as well.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, the school board is going to be approving our proposed final budget for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. On the budget will be advertised for public inspection for thirty days beginning tomorrow. Final adoption will be at the June twentieth meeting. We are proposing a one mil tax increase, which brings the district in approximately seventy thousand dollars in additional revenue. The budget amount is currently twenty-four million, three hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars and thirty-nine cents. Our deficit right now is four hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents, which will be covered by our fund balance monies. Our largest expenses currently are cyber school costs, special, special education, and healthcare and retirement increases.
And that is all we have at this time, Mr. Balliot.
Thank you, Mr. Cheddar and Ms. Lesko. We would now like to recognize the student merit award winners for the month of May. For the elementary school, we have Peyton Marshallak. And Peyton's is being read by Mrs. James.
Peyton. There you are.
There's Peyton.
Peyton, it is with great pleasure that I nominate Peyton Michellek for the May Merit Award. When thinking, and that's from Miss Stitchy, just so you know, that's not from me. When thinking about recipients for this award, Peyton's name immediately comes to, to mind because she stands out amongst her peers for so many reasons. In the classroom, she excels. She sets her standards high and pushes herself to work hard to achieve her goals. She always does what is expected, but then goes above and beyond what is asked of her. As a person, Peyton truly embodies the traits worthy of a merit winner. She is respectful and kind. She is willing to help anyone in any way she can. I often see her assisting students with classwork when they return from an absence, and she does a great job sharing and explaining the information that may have been missed. She is an excellent role model, always choosing to do what is right. She has an overall fun personality and is liked by everyone. Peyton is truly an exemplary individual and it does not go unnoticed. Peyton's strong work ethic and success are also seen outside of the classroom. She plays basketball for SYBL and is a Mount Carmel Junior Red Cheerleader. Again, always willing to put in extra, she engages in speed and agility training beyond her regular practice, regular practices. Additionally, she volunteers her free time helping at her family business. I'm excited for Peyton's future and looking forward to seeing all of her accomplishments. She is a true asset to the Mount Carmel Area School District. Peyton is the daughter of Brock and Crystal Michellek. She resides in Mount Carmel with her parents and brother Gavin. Congratulations Peyton from Miss Stitchy. Peyton, on behalf of the Mount Carmel Area Board of Education, I am honored to present you with the Merit Award for May twenty twenty-four.
Peyton, would you like to say anything to the board?
I just wanna say thank you to the board and thank you to Miss Stitchy, Stitchy for nominating me for this award.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, and our high school recipient is Michaela Hodge. And that is going to be read by Mr. Breder.
Kale? That you back there? Okay, the Mount Carmel Area Board of Education Merit Award winner for the month of May is Junior Michaela Hodge. She was nominated for the Merit Award by Mr. Cuddick, who said, "Most students who are new to a school are understandably shy and a little reserved when they don't know their teachers or classmates." Michaela Hodge, however, showed up at O's Open House confident, outgoing, and poised to begin the school year. This motivational attitude persists throughout the school year, and Michaela constantly displays enthusiasm in her classes and frequently volunteers. She employs her previous knowledge by performing excellence excellently on her work. When confronted with challenging material, Michaela thoroughly evaluates and analyzes the sources to determine the answers. On a personal level, Michaela is kind to her peers and even accepted my suggestion to befriend some additional students with whom I think should, she would be well suited. Her pleasant personality and her desire to excel in school was, was as, as well as her confident and outgoing personality certainly make her worthy of the School Board Merit Award. Michaela was also in the musical and in the high school band. For a new student, she has fully ingrained herself in our school community and is an asset to Mount Carmel. Michaela is an honor roll student, a member of a novel idea reading club, the school chorus, symphonic band, jazz band, and the school musical. In her free time, Michaela enjoys reading and relaxing. She is the daughter of Tiffany Hodge and Anderson Best. She resides in Mount Carmel with her parents and her sister Zola. So, um, Michaela, on behalf of the Mount Carmel Area Board of Education, congratulations. And you are welcome to say whatever you really like.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations again to, to both Michaela and, and to Peyton. And we'd also like to congratulate your parents because we know that a great student doesn't happen just automatically. So your parents had a lot to do with it. So another round of applause. Okay, so we've come to the part of the meeting where if you would like to be excused, we, we still have a lot of, a lot of things to go over, but if you'd like to. If you're wel- welcome. Yeah, bye-bye. You're welcome to leave if you'd like to, or welcome to stay if you'd like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Have a good night. A motion is needed to approve the amended minutes of March twenty-first, twenty twenty-four regular board meeting and also the minutes of April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four regular board meeting. Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
Okay, uh, Mr. Okay.
Mr. Gonzalo.
Mr. Gonzalo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, do we have a PTA representative report?
So the PTA was able to host a family movie night just this last Friday. We had over eighty people in attendance. The movie night seemed like everyone enjoyed. The movie that we showed was the migration movie. And we also were able to show our appreciation to the staff of the Mount Carmel Elementary School and we're, we're looking forward to what we have in store for next year. We have one more board meeting coming up, not this coming Tuesday, but the following Tuesday. And there we are needing to approve our budget and just get everything finalized for the upcoming school year. And we do have proposed schedule events for this upcoming school year. We're gonna try to do a, a fundraiser in September, have our book fair in October, a family movie night in November, and early December, we're hoping to have a Santa shop. Then February, a book bingo, March, three to fun, and then April, the pre PSSA spirit week that we started this year, and then May, again, another family movie night. So as long as school administration is fine with that, that is what we're hoping to accomplish next year.
You're certainly very busy and we certainly appreciate everything the PTA is doing. It's a lot of nice things. Thank you. This is Seacrest. At this time, we'd like to recognize any guests that are desiring to speak to the listed agenda items. Do we have anybody in the room that would like to speak? Do we have anybody online?
Nothing online.
Okay, thank you. Okay, administrative reports, Mr. Cheddar, anything further?
Nothing additional at this time, but.
Okay, thank you. Principals reports. Do we have a senior high report?
And then we'll do a combined building report from the high school, junior high, high school. So this month, we concluded PSA testing earlier. Test ran very smooth. We also recently began Keystone exams. The lit exam concluded on Wednesday. Bio finishes tomorrow. Algebra is scheduled for next Tuesday, Wednesday. Our site inductions were this week. Congrats to all of our students who were inducted into our various societies at the high school. They include Masked Gavel, Clothes Roll, Athletic Honor Society, and both the National and Junior National Honor Society. Diplomacia is gonna be held this Sunday for senior class at seven o'clock PM. Senior final exams will begin on Monday and continue Tuesday and Wednesday of next week. And the last full day for seniors is Wednesday, May twenty-second. And finally, officers of the senior class and their advisor, Mrs. Monger, are here with us this evening and would like to address the board to upcoming invitation.
Hi, my name is Zoe. Okay. Hi, my name is Zoe Psycho. I am the class of twenty twenty-four's treasurer, and I would like to personally thank you guys. You do so much for us every year and we're so grateful for you.
Hi, my name is Hannah Bededite. I'm the secretary of the class of twenty-four, twenty twenty-four. And I'd like to also thank the administration for everything they do in keeping us organized.
Hi, my name is Bella Berzowski. I'm the vice president of the class of twenty twenty-four. I'd like to personally thank the teachers for their commitment to our education and for being a positive role model, model and inspiration to all of us.
Hi, I'm Ava Chapman. I'm the class of twenty twenty-four president. And on behalf of the whole class twenty twenty-four, we would like to formally invite you to what we are calling the final hour before graduation. We are inviting all of you as a thank you for everything you do for us for an orders hour. The hour before graduation, time for us to personally come up and thank you guys, meet with you guys, talk with you guys, get pictures if we want. So we really think it was like a nice gesture to just thank you for everything you've done for us throughout the whole school year and through our whole high school careers. So thank you guys for everything.
We think it was a nice gesture too. Thank you very much. Is there anything else?
There we go. No, that would be a good one. Thank you.
Do we have an elementary?
Report. We do. Good evening, Mr. Balliot and everyone. I'm just standing up briefly. I asked Mr. Chair to pull up one screen. So before I go down on my list or one slide rather, if you could just look at the screen for a moment, I just wanted to highlight, which we don't do often enough. The, the new science standards for Pennsylvania are rolling out in a mandatory form next school year. And a lot of them have to do with STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics education. So we're in the process of implementing those standards this year. We don't have a lot of the resources, but we're fortunate because the CSIU actually has what's called a lending library. There was a grant, and to be honest, I'm not sure how many years ago, where they purchased a ton of this kind of hands-on material to do this instruction. And school, any schools in the IU are able to submit to borrow the equipment for two weeks at a time. So fortunately, we have some teachers doing that. And this is an example of Miss Stitchy's fourth grade science classroom. And just what I'm gonna show you are literally thirty to forty second, two thirty, thirty second, thirty second, thirty to forty second videos, Mr. Muldowney. Of the students on their Chromebooks actually creating closed circuit type of, of projects where you're going to see they're actually designing an interface on their Chromebook that is a video game and they're creating, they're using materials like Play-Doh up there. They're actually using bananas where they're hooking the wires and the clips into there and using those to manipulate what you see on the screen. So I, there's engagement like you've never seen before. It doesn't matter because this is the life kids live every day is the video game. Now they're starting to learn what's going on behind the scenes. So they're all about it. So anyway, Mr. Cheddar, if you would just click this bottom, bottom left. Volume.
Close on your stomach. Then you can see your blood, which closes the circuit. Then it's a device. We can't see electricity. Two, between the buttons.
So show the game.
So I know that there's an echo. But that's a pinball game on a machine and he's pushing the pieces of Play-Doh that's manipulating the flappers and the pinball. So that's just one example. We won't have, we won't play the other one, but that's actually a piano keyboard and the bananas are, bananas are piano keys. So they start to play Jingle Bells and some music. So we're gonna continue to use whatever resources are available to us. Obviously, well, you guys around the table know me, I'm, I'm out for any kind of grant we can find. There aren't any readily available just yet, but we're gonna keep looking. So I just wanted to show, I thought that was important to show you guys, just kind of, you don't see enough what's going on in the walls. So behind, inside the walls, inside the school, anyway. Couple other things folks mentioned about PSAs already. Great job to all of our students and teachers. They did a phenomenal job. We were one hundred percent online this year. Last year, we had third and fourth grade. This year, we incorporated fifty-sixth grade, trying to be strategic in terms of when the mandatory twenty twenty-six, the state will require them to be online. So we were able to successfully do that. Couple other things, kindergarten graduation next Wednesday, May twenty-second, six thirty in the high school auditorium. On Tuesday, May twenty-eighth at five thirty is our kindergarten prom. It's our second annual kindergarten prom. A lot of folks excited about that. We have movement on update on May twenty-eighth, Tuesday. So thank you, Mrs. Stefanaski. She's been very hard at work on our class list for next year. So on May twenty-eighth, all of our students will know their classes and their teachers for next school year. So we've been very busy with that. There's a lot going on this summer. I don't want to take up a lot of time. We're working on what's called a spell grant with the CSIU in Patton, which is successful PA's early learners. We have a group of about fifteen teachers and staff and sports staff being trained this summer on some of the elements of that, that, that is a grant. Basically, we're allotted thirty thousand dollars that will be over the next three years. We have some other exciting things too that came from the Project Aware Grant, again, in affiliation with the CSI, CSIU. We will be, we will have a multi-tiered systems of support team next year with a dedicated coach being provided for the district for the grant. So that's an additional resource personnel that we don't have the ability to hire. Other than that, any information? Or just a reminder, kindergarten and pre-care registration still remain open. Please stop in the office, get your packet for that as soon as possible. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Cheddar.
And thank you. A lot of good information. Do we have a special education report?
Yeah, just briefly, so Spartan Games were May seventh. They went really well. The kids and staff had a great time. A special thank you to Mrs. Eldon for getting all the T-shirts, hats, and goodie bags made for the kids. As was mentioned before, Pasa and PSSA testing with students wrapped up this month and Kingston has their current name progress. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Do we have a maintenance report?
Good evening. This past month throughout the district, grounds received new mulch in preparation for graduation and prom. The front of the filled house also received new stone. The HVAC changeover started on the twenty-eighth of April and was completed on May first. With the end of the year coming up on us quickly, we are busy preparing for events inside the buildings and out. With that being said, we are also prepping for summer sports and camps. This includes soccer, football, and band. This summer, the home side bleachers at the Silver Bowl will be receiving a facelift. This project is to start in the middle of June. During this time, the stadium will be closed to walkers, as Mr. Cheddar had mentioned. A alert now will be going out with more information on that. That's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and finally, do we have an athletic director's report?
Yep, I'm gonna do the athletic report. Our spring sports teams have been having successful seasons thus far, and all teams have qualified for the district playoffs. Special congratulations to our varsity boys track and field team for clinching the P-hack Division Three League Championship this season. All district playoff information for all sports will be posted on our athletic Facebook page as we receive it. A reminder that there are no pets allowed on our campus. Please be advised of this. Tickets will be issued to those who do not abide by these rules. We will be hosting three youth sports camps within our district this coming summer. Information for our football cheerleading and track and field camp can be found by visiting our athletics Facebook page or by stopping in the athletic office. And finally, we'd like to wish our spring sports teams good luck as they enter postseason.
Okay, thank you very much and thanks to all of the administration for all that information. Okay, now on to athletic items. A motion is needed to approve athletic items one through five as listed.
Motion.
Mr. Muldowney?
Second.
Second, Mr. Gonzalo? Have a roll call, please?
Mr. Balliot?
Yes.
Mr. Beresowski?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalo?
Yes.
Mr. Hexon?
Yes.
Mrs. James, Phil Chest, Mr. Muldowney?
Yes.
Mr. Reddow?
Yes.
Mr. Zach? Mr. Zach Salon?
He is.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, a motion is also needed to approve financial items one through four.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Breder? Second. Second, Mr. Beresowski? Okay, can I have a roll call, roll please?
Mr. Gonzalo?
Yes.
Mr. Hexon?
Yes.
Mrs. James, Phil Chest, Mr. Muldowney?
Yes.
Mr. Reddow?
Yes.
Mr. Zach?
Yes.
Mr. Balliot?
Yes.
Mr. Beresowski?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes. Hey, Mr. Cheddar, do we have a Mount Carmel Area Education Foundation report?
Yes, our, our foundation will be meeting at the conclusion of tonight's meeting. So if anyone from the public or in attendance here tonight would like to stick around, we, we have on our topic of agenda are many projects that we're undertaking and, and some possible avenues for us to even expand our foundation moving forward. So I encourage anyone who would like to stick around after our meeting tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Cheddar. Okay, so a motion is needed to approve new business action items one through seventeen with a minor change on number thirteen to read approval of the agreement with Daktronics Incorporated for a video board through KPN. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Breder? And second, Mr. Muldowney? Roll call, please.
Sure, Mr. Balliot?
Yes.
Mr. Beresowski?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalo?
Yes.
Mr. Hexon?
I do have one question on eleven. I tried to reach out, but I'm made an answer me. And it says excluding, Pete, did you get the top to him?
No, I was assuming you did on that.
I reached out, I didn't get an answer. It says not to exceed one hundred and twenty-three thousand, excluding allowances for architecture. So it's gonna go above and beyond one hundred and twenty-three thousand?
No.
No.
That was not, again, we, we talked about that last week in our session. That was, that's the max.
Okay. So is that written right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I'm good. Yes.
Mrs. James, Phil Chest, Mr. Muldowney? Yes. Mr. Reddow?
Yes.
Mr. Zach?
Yes.
Thank you. A motion is needed to approve the personnel items listed down through eleven. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Gonzalo? Okay, second, second, Mr. Breder? Roll call, please.
Mr. Muldowne?
Yes.
Mr. Reddow?
Yes.
Mr. Zach?
Yes.
Mr. Balliot?
Yes.
Mr. Beresowski?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalo?
Yes.
Mr. Hexon?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Mrs. James, well, Jess.
Okay, thank you. We'd like to pause at this time. Are there any uh, public comments or questions? Is there any, anything online?
Actually, not live.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, before we adjourn, can I make a comment about our next regular meeting scheduled for June twentieth, two thousand twenty-four?
Please do, sir.
So, um, during that meeting, um, our criminalary school board will be voting on a um, L R D A tax exemption um, that was brought to our attention by the Mount Carmel Township Board of Supervisors and a gentleman from his name's escaped me right now, Blue Ridge Management. So um, from what I understand, um, will be asked to to weigh um, a percentage uh, from eighty-five to ninety percent of taxes, a a proposed uh, industrial um, tenant will be, we will be unexpected to pay. So um, I I feel this is a major decision and I I'm making this announcement to encourage residents from our school district to um, either attend our work session on June's, on June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, or the regular meeting on June twentieth, two thousand twenty-four. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brecker. Okay, can we have a um, a motion to adjourn?
And before we do that, Mr. Valley, I see you guys here. Uh, was there something that you guys wanted to bring up? I'm not sure.
Yeah, yeah, didn't know when we were like.
I, what are you, are you here? I'm assuming you're here for dress code?
Yeah.
There was a dress code committee at six o'clock.
But if they have something to say.
Yeah, if you have something to say, if you want to give your input, are you all here for that for the same reason?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, yes, you could get, you could.
Okay, do I have to like stand and speak?
Yeah.
All right, I'm Jessa Robert. You know Carmel. Um, I just like to say my parents.
No.
I just want to come and talk about the dress code. I think that it's unfair to students who come to school every day and have to come and get looked at by teachers and administrators. And it's uncomfortable and I miss class for this. And it's like my education is being ruined because I have to get my pants checked every day. And I get called bigger by administrators when that should not be a thing because an administrator should never say that to a child, first off, and I just think that the kids who think they have authority in this school get to do what they want, but then kids who are good and get good grades and are on the honor roll, they um, just get looked at a lot more than like, say, a kid who doesn't do their work or anything like that. And some kids just get to do whatever they want and like wear whatever they want, which shouldn't happen because we're all equal. We're all students at Mount Carmel, elementary, high school. It doesn't matter what your name is, what anything is, because it shouldn't matter. That's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a a question for you. What what is your, what is the major issue that you have? What what's the major disruption that that you find?
I feel I miss a lot of class and like I'm not learning because I'm getting looked at for my pants uncomfortably.
And what would you, if you got to snap your fingers and say, what would you want in the dress code? What would you, like, what would be?
I would like have it like relaxed.
Like dress down day, like Fridays?
Yeah.
Okay, so like every day?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would say so.
Okay.
Cause I don't see like an issue in my sweatpants or anything like that.
Correct.
Like, still like, obviously like school appropriate, but like very much relaxed because everyone wants to be comfortable in their day and just learn because that's what I came here to do is to learn in education, which I'm not getting.
Okay. All right. Anyone else or was everyone?
Um, my name is Lily Mowry. Um, my concern is that people who, again, think they have authority, come to school every single day in sweatpants or athletic shorts and no one says anything to them. But I walk in, someone says something about my pants, Jessa walks in, someone says something about her pants. It's just always something. But kids who play football and think that they're better than everyone, get to wear whatever they want and no one says anything about it. So if they're allowed to wear it on like Monday to Thursday, why can't we wear sweatpants Monday to Thursday?
So you feel boys are wearing sweatpants?
Yes, and athletic shorts every single day and no one's saying anything about it.
Correct.
Okay, that's.
So is this a dress code issue or a a lack of following, alleged lack of following rules?
Well, I think it's both because our administration doesn't say anything to the boys who wear athletic shorts that are shorter than probably the shorts that I would wear as a girl. And no one says anything about it. So that's all I just said.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And what what grade are you in, Lily?
Eleven.
Eleven, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do you guys agree with what was said so far?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Is it safe to say, and I I don't want to pour your mouth, but is this that you guys came here because you feel the dress code should be relaxed?
Yeah.
Yeah, like dressed down, like Fridays?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just think it's unfair that even like girls, like they wear crop tops. And no one says their chest out.
A lot of people have like.
So there's a double standard of what you say.
Yes, like do, girls do do this too, but like it just is the fact that I get looked at because I'm bigger and they don't because they're small. Like, it shouldn't be that way. That's it.
Correct. All right, everyone, while we do appreciate you coming, we did have a dress code meeting at six o'clock. We're planning to schedule a future one, so I'd want you guys to to attend those. Uh, and for the sake of time though, if you guys have opinions of what you believe would be the best dress code or ideas, get that in writing, get that to me and I can promise I'm going to get it to the rest of the board for them to review because now's the time. If we ever change anything and I'm not sure if we will, this is something where we've been, we've, we've, we've been undertaking for a very long time. Now's the time to do it. In in the next month because we want families to have tons of time prepared leading in the next school year, okay? So get that to me as soon as you guys can. And if you want to talk to me or sit down with me to discuss more, let me know, okay? All right, guys.
Okay, yeah, thank you, everybody. And giving your uh, your opinion and commentary. We do appreciate it and we will listen to it. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting tonight?
Motion.
Mr. Hickson, okay, all in favor? All right, our next meeting is scheduled, a regular meeting for June twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Thank you, everybody, and have a good night.